I think the order, please stand. For the pledge of allegiance and every silence.
Elegance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, god, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or revisions to the regular or consent agendas? Dr. Smith has a comment for us?
Yes, so as part of the consent agenda, Fillmore Elementary School Principal Gibney recently submitted her resignation to seek other professional opportunities. We thank her for her service to South Putnam Community Schools during these past two school years, and I ask for your approval of her resignation agreement in the consent agenda.
We made the motion to approve that's a regular agenda. We seconded that. All those in favor? Those who need to abstain?
Abstain.
And we have new hires.
I just wanted to recognize tonight, J.C. Thomas. We lured him away from Vigo County. We are very excited that he's coming in to help with our middle school special education students in both math and English. He's also coaching with our football staff. He has lots of experience in special education. He's worked with both adults and children in different programming. In the last three years, he's been serving as a special education teacher. So, we really appreciate what he's bringing to our community and to our kids. And then I'd also like to introduce, Grace Gregory is coming in, and she's going to be an aide for us in our building. I think you have three different things you approved her for. So, she said she would substitute teach for us. Then she agreed to do an aide position for us, and she's also going to be our head volleyball coach. So, we're really excited about the program that she wants to build here and strengthen what we already have and continue to build that out. And be welcome, Grace. And then Courtney Weddle. We got Courtney here as a maternity leave person to come in and teach out the rest of this year for a maternity leave. And she's done a beautiful job. Kids have loved her, and she's been excellent in the classroom. And we've had student scores that reflect the strength that she's brought to us. And now she's going to stay. We're going to get a keeper. So, she has her family here as well. So, she's another person we're really excited about having in our community.
Thank you. Welcome, all of you.
I also have two in part of the consent agenda. We have changes here of our two ladies sitting here. Ms. Hillary Logan is going to be stepping down as treasurer of the corporation and will be moving to the Fillmore Elementary secretary position. That'll be effective in August. And then Erin will be stepping into the treasurer seat left open by Hillary. So, we're looking very forward to these changes. And see the smiles on their faces? They're ready to go. But they have to work together for the next couple of months to get everything all set up and ready to go for August. So, we're excited for those changes. So, wish you all the best in your positions.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay, are we ready for ISBA awards?
Yeah, so usually we are recognizing students or programs or whatever, but tonight, we're going to recognize school board members. We just recently had the ISBA regional meeting last week in Greencastle. And the South Putnam Community School Board here was awarded an advanced level-two school board designation from the ISBA. And they got a nice little thing to go on their plaque of their exemplary governance awards from the ISBA. So, to be commended on that. And not only did the whole board get that, each individual board member actually ran awards as well. Lee Klein and Wade Fanning were awarded a commendable level-one board member designation. Joe Roach was awarded the advanced level-two board member designation. And Holly Hutchinson and Lisa Kipper were awarded the distinguished level-three board member designation. So, that's for their service and for all the things they go to and all the professional development they've been through. So, thank you guys very much for all the meetings.
Okay, financial update.
I'll just keep going. In your board package, you have the latest reports from the end of the month of April. We have all the claim dockets were in there, the payrolls, the cash flows on the transfers, and the fund reports. And as reflected in those reports, you can see we continue to perform as we forecasted. And we look forward to continuing to do that.
Legislative update, Wade Fanning.
I don't really have anything because I couldn't begin to tell you something that was not said at the regional meeting on last Tuesday very indepthly. I'm really able to make it. I did make you happy. But I love to say slides only to look through. There was just a lot of outstanding information that was already shared with us. So, I would just simply be reiterating what we just heard on Tuesday.
Project update, Doug Rambo from MKS. Glad to see you again.
Likewise. Some big goings on at the job site lately. Today, we started putting up structural steel for the PNB construction metal building. And it's been a long time coming. Nine trucks yesterday, so everything's onsite, shaking out and going up. So, couldn't be more pleased. And on top of that, on the transition going into the school by the pool, some storefront is in. And we're going to be working hard to, we're going to adjust the barricade. So, for graduation, they'll be able to see the two sections of storefront for this south. So, the pool is going well. The gutter's completely installed. We're going to be pouring, kind of decided to stop and clean now, and then we'll pour after the holiday. So, and work on getting the pool back to the school. So, liner work will commence straight after that. And they say things are looking pretty favorable there as well. So, if anybody's been around the track recently, we installed finally the gravel stop that's been, so hopefully we can keep the phantom gravel off of the track from the prevailing winds. Came out pretty nice. It really works with the whole, like, the black fence and whatnot. It really came out well. And that's about it. Aside from the new admin building that we had the pre-bid for last week and had some big interest in it. So, I think we're up to six, is that true? Six contractors bidding, and we'll look forward to seeing the pricing.
Are there some local contractors who may bid?
Yes, there are. Yep. And a couple of local subs wanted to be put on the list of the, you know, the larger GCs also to bid some of the subs.
The swimming pool, is that, what kind of timeline is it before you put the water back in?
We're looking, it's end of June, I believe, right now. So, yes. And it's, like I said, the liner will be the driving factor because, like I said, they're pour the curve and then start with the liner right from there. And all the plumbing's complete already. Bonding and whatnot for the electrical, that's all completed. And so, it'll just be liner work pretty much right after the holiday.
I have one more thing for you. So, you may have noticed, well, actually for the board, but you may have noticed their trailers have been moved to the front of the fieldhouse now because starting next Tuesday.
Oh, wow, yeah.
There you go.
We're remiss to say. We started the asphalt work at Central Elementary School, starting on the, right when we come back on the 27th. So, it's, that's going to be exciting. There's going to be a big shakeup there. It's, you know, we had a meeting yesterday and then today about getting everything locked in. So, all the camps will go swimmingly. And we'll still be able to get anyone that needs to watch the games and whatnot with, you know, perhaps disabilities and whatnot, still into the building. It should be relatively seamless. Thank you. Thanks for the save. I appreciate it.
Public comments? All right, we're on to seven, new business. Second reading of the Neola policy, corporation policy update.
Yep, so in your board package, as you've seen for the last two board meetings, this is the second reading of the 41 Neola policy updates. No action on this, on number, or letter A here. It's just an acknowledgement in our minutes that we had the second reading.
And so, then now we will be on B, consideration of approval of Neola corporation policy update.
Yep, and that's basically exactly what I was going to say. So, all I'm asking for tonight is for the approval of those policy updates that's provided in your board packets.
To approve the Neola policy updates.
One second.
Joe made the motion to approve the Neola corporation policy update. We seconded that. All those? Considerations of overnight out-of-state deals.
As per board policy, all overnight and out-of-state trips, field trips must be board-approved. Therefore, we're seeking approval of the trips that are in those board packets. I think there are a couple of basketball trips, so.
Move to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trips. One second.
We made the motion to approve the overnight and out-of-state field trips. Wade seconded that. All those in favor? All right, item D, first reading of the middle school, high school handbook update.
Yep, so this is the first reading of the middle school, high school updates for the 25-26 school year. No actions needed tonight. This is a new process that we're going through with our handbook updates. But they're provided for your review and questions. We'll approve the updates at the June board meeting. And I believe Mrs. Gardner's here to provide a brief overview of that.
I see a lot of updates in the document that I sent you. I just focused on what was changing. What's driving a lot of it is just the fact that they're updating the, or they have updated the diploma. And so, we're kind of straddled this line for the next few years of when we have students who are on the old diploma requirements, and then we have kids who are moving to the new ones as well. So, you'll see that language in there. There were a couple of legislative updates that specifically impacted the handbook. So, you see those in there as well. Timelines in terms of, and processes in terms of, like, bullying processes, that you'll see that in there as well. Some subtle changes to a couple of things where we just wanted to add, like, we didn't used to do a sophomore seminar, and now we do that. So, we're adding that in. So, there's just some tweaks on some of that language as well. Something that's a new requirement is that we're saying and asking parents now when they come to an extracurricular event, if a child is younger than high school, that there is an adult there who's responsible for that child. If they're staying the night at a friend's house, and that friend's mom is responsible for the kids that night, that adult can serve as that person. But we don't want kids younger than high school coming unaccompanied to an extracurricular event with no adult there to take responsibility. We've had some problems this fall at football games. We'd have a weather event come in, and so everybody needs to take shelter. And we'd have kiddos there that were middle school or younger that didn't have an adult to be responsible for them. And then even when we reached out to adults, there was a significant time lag for getting someone there. We also had an incident where a kid got hurt, and we had to get extra help for that kid. And again, we didn't have an adult there. So, we've asked in the past for parents to do that, but now we're going to be requiring it. So, when they come to the gate, we're asking in our new handbook updates that they would have to have an adult with them when they come in and get their ticket and enter the game.
Is that the responsibility of the ticket taker to monitor that?
Right, and so that will be a person. Obviously, if a student gets through that process and we found out that they violated it, and then administrator would go and meet that child and contact the family and let them know. But we're hoping to be able to stop that at the gate and prevent that from the moment that the student arrives. And every fall, we always give updates on the handbook to our families. And so, that would be one that we would be emphasizing. There's a couple other subtle things in there as well with attendance. We, starting last year, we had to do attendance meetings now with families once kids reach five unexcused absences within a period of time. We had to do that within five days before. Now, the legislators extended that to 10 days. So, those are kind of just some highlights of what was in there. So, if you have additional questions, please let me know, and I'm happy to clarify anything, or if you know now that you have a question.
Can you talk a little bit about the Safe Driver Workshop?
So, this, now that we have SROs in the building, one of the things, full-time, which has been a great addition to our school, one of the things we've talked about are what are some more ways that our SROs can be part of that education process? How can they interact with kids in a positive way to just expand kids' understanding? And this idea, we've had a few fender benders in our parking lot with kids. And kids, even though they're going through driver's ed and they're learning about what they're supposed to do, a lot of our kids still don't really know in that moment, what am I supposed to do? And so, Rick York was actually the one who brought it up. Like, how about we do just a really short little workshop with kids when they get their driver's parking permit? And bring kids in and just hit some tips and tricks with driving? And that could be one of them, is what do you do when you have a fender bender? And reminding kids of that process. And just like the other day, we had a power outage up at the junction, and the light was red, and it went to a four-way stop. And so, just reminding our kids, like, hey, if that happens, what do we do? So, we are going to ask kids to do that. We're going to require them as part of that parking process. We're going to really work with kids. We're going to offer them multiple times. You know, I think in the language of the handbook, we're like, well, if ultimately, if you absolutely say, I refuse to do this, then we'd say, well, then you can't park here. But it's not our intention to be heavy-handed with that. We're going to really work with kids to have a time when we can work it out where they can go. And we'll keep it short. We'll also have the administrators trained on it as well. So, if we did have a period of time, for some reason, when we didn't have an SRO, unforeseen circumstances, then we have an administrators. We would have the slideshow, and we could go in there and do that as well.
My mind went to administrators who are having accidents in the parking lot, so they need to.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
So, it's kind of dual-purpose. It's to gain more engagement, right?
Yeah.
And then also, you know, anytime you bring in a teenager who is fresh with their license, you have those moments, like, you didn't know that?
Right, right. And they're focused on everything they have to pass for their driver's test. And so, these are just some things we've seen, you know, being around kids in the last few years that we're like, hey, here's some spots where kids might need a reminder.
So, with the football thing that happened twice last year, do we have a severe weather action plan that, other than just hang onto your cars?
Right.
Because there are, I mean, obviously, we're going to try to solve the issue with the kid thing because there's an adult that's in charge of them. But there were a lot of kids that were without parents.
Yep.
And then there's also a lot of elderly people that may be parked way far away.
Yeah.
What, do we, can we bring them into the school?
Sure.
Stay away from that? Do we want to, like, what do we, do we have a plan?
So, mostly what happened last year were just thunderstorms and a tornado, like, watcher warning situation. But bringing that up, yes, we do. So, this is great because the other night, we had a band concert here. And we actually were under a tornado watch at one point during that concert. And we made an announcement prior to it, starting what our plan was at that time. So, normally, when you're in the gym with your kids, you go in the locker rooms. But we didn't want to bring 200 people into the locker rooms and have grandma get down on the floor, you know, like, and have a place to sit. So, our plan that evening was that we would go down to the science rooms. Mr. Errett's room is right down that hallway. And if you enter Mr. Errett's room, then you can funnel into the other science rooms. And then everybody would have a chair, but it's an internal part of our building. So, in a comparable way, if we had a actual torn, like, we ask people to go back to their vehicles and shelter when we've just had rain and those kinds of things. But certainly, if people need to seek, and I think that night, we did say, if you need to get shelter, you can come in the building. If it was a tornado situation, we have multiple interior rooms where we can direct people to those spaces. And that follows what plans, type of plans that we have during the school day too as well.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we actually had that, had to think that, not think it through. We already had a plan, but we had to announce that the other night because of that exact situation.
Thank you. I like the way the, just the changes were highlighted in the packet. And, but it did cause me a problem. It's like, I was bringing it through, and I saw swim unit. And I'm like, okay, we're specifically calling out swim unit.
Yep.
Can we call out other units, like, specific units in the handbook, like weights unit?
Okay.
You know, any kind of other unit? I just always assumed that anything like this with swimming was associated already. So, I wasn't sure, like, what prompted that and why we're calling, singling that out. I did notice, like, some of the dress code thing seemed like that might be the main reason.
Absolutely.
To specify that, but I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that up. And I apologize for not mentioning it in my overview because we haven't offered, in my memory, we haven't offered, no, that's not true. We haven't recently offered a swim unit to our students that is more of a required unit. We have offered it within the last few years. Rasha Scott did a swim unit where it was kind of an elective swim class that kids to take. And we had a handful that took that. This, we're moving to a middle school model where a majority of our students will be taking it. They do, parents do have the right to opt their kids out. But as we were talking through that process, we did want to address the dress code issue because if you look at our current dress code, it does, it's not really line-for-line applicable to a swim-type situation. And so, when we reached out to local schools that do have swim programs to find out how their language was constructed, we followed that idea. And then we just wanted to call out a few reminders that it is a unique environment where you want to make sure that kids are being careful around the pool and that they're following the directions of everybody who's giving them guidance. You know, swim environments are an area where we have to follow all of those rules to keep everybody safe. And we would have both a swim instructor in there and a lifeguard. And that's part of what everybody has to do if they have people in a pool. So, we will obviously be following those guidelines. So, we wanted to call that out for parents. And that's something that we'll have a form for parents. It says if you don't want your child to participate, then submit it in writing. We'll also actually have a form that we'll share out with parents, so it calls it to their attention.
I was wondering about that because swim, knowing how to swim can save your life, right?
Yes.
Life skill.
Yep.
So, I think it's free. You're putting it in the PE classes.
Right.
But I was curious as to why it was somewhat optional or how, anyway.
So, in the past, part of it's just capacity to be able to offer it. So, that's why we had only offered it as an elective in the past. Now, we have more people in the building that have that training. So, there's a higher capacity to be able to offer that. And then our PE, the PE structure is moving that kids will meet their high school PE requirements in eighth grade. And then high school PE turns in more into that weights and agility elective-type environment. So, if we're going to have a majority of our students take it as they're coming through school, then middle school seems like the appropriate time to position them. And so, again, parents can opt their students out, but we're going to encourage them for three different reasons, right? So, you mentioned safety. That's really important. Physical activity, swimming is an amazing physical activity for people to do for health. And then you also see it a lot for physical therapy. So, we have some of our student athletes that will do exercises and things in the pool already as part of their physical therapy. So, to have those three components to expose kids to the pool and get them some initial life-saving skills, we feel is important. So, kids at sixth grade and seventh grade would get a four-week unit where they would get an introduction to the swim safety and physical activity.
Right, but why do parents have an option? I mean, do they have an option for basketball and whatever else the PE teacher does it?
I think given the environment that you're in, just like in a weightlifting environment, because there's higher stakes, it's a, you know, students are going to be around a pool. If for some reason, a parent says, I just don't feel comfortable having my student around the pool, I would not want to mandate that environment for a student to say, in order to be a student at South Putnam, you must participate in this swim activity.
Is there an alternative for that student?
Well, they would be participating in their rest of their physical education class. So, if for some, let's say that a student had a fifth.
The whole class is in the pool, and you've got maybe one student.
It won't be, though. It'll be, half the students will be in the pool, and then half the students will be with their other physical education teacher. And then we'll flip-flop. So, the other half of the kids will be in the pool, and then the other kids will be with the physical education teacher. So, if a student opts out of the swim program, then they would just stay the entire time with their physical education teacher.
I was trying to go through that in my head, too. Like, how is it different than what Mr. Merkel and his brothers used to do? Right? Because we did the same thing. We're like, hey, all the kids are in here today, and then we swap. And it's like, how is it different than that? Why is it now in the handbook? The only thing I could think of is maybe we got away from it, and then we also have the dress code thing, and that's, it sounds like that's what it is.
Yeah, and then there's, you know, there's a few other moments at school where we'll have a parent that there's a really strong reason why they don't want their student to participate in a certain activity, and we've found alternative activities for their student to do. And so, swim is going to be another one of those. But we wanted to call that to people's attention specifically because I can imagine it would be an initial question I would get is if for some reason, somebody says, my child is very fearful of the water. We don't want my child to participate. Then would they have an option to do other physical activities and earn their credit that way?
Can we have a way of supporting those students who may not be able to afford something?
Yes, yep. We have a student in need program where we can support that, absolutely. And I've already talked to people about how we can get those.
I have one more, I have one more thing, a couple of things for the handbook. For the dual credit, do we not do anything with DEPA anymore? Because I know Greencastle kids do.
Right.
And if you're traveling to Ivy Tech, I'm confused, but is that a possibility?
Yeah, so the ALFA program still exists. There is, I don't have the number right in front of me. It's around $500 for to take a course. What students have to do is they have to apply in the summertime to be accepted. But then we don't get the course catalog until August. And then at that time, if there would be a class that a student would want to take, then they could sign up then. And what happens is DEPA doesn't issue the catalog options for kids until they've already scheduled their students. And so, I don't want to name a name, but a couple of years ago, we had one student who said he thought he really might be interested. And then the only, it's hard to get him to line up with the kids' schedules. I think it was anthropology and one other, Chinese, maybe, were the two classes that were going to fit into the slot he had available. And he wasn't particularly interested in those two classes, so he didn't end up taking one. So, that's the biggest barrier that we see is a lot of our kids who would be interested in ALFA class are wanting to take a lot of dual enrollment, dual-credit classes or, like, AP classes. And so, their schedule's fairly rigid, and they might have one or two spots open. And then that doesn't happen to be a time when DEPA is offering a course that interests them. So, there's just not been a lot of alignment in the last couple of years. But it's something that we can be advertising more, but that's just an explanation of why it's not been utilized a little bit more by some of our kids.
Is there an application fee for them?
There's no application fee. It's just a charge if they end up taking the class.
They have to go through the high school to apply? So, like, in June, if somebody decides, hey, we'd like to do something at DEPA, can they just go to the DEPA website or something and fill out the application? Or do they have to get that through?
I don't know the answer to whether or not, I would assume it's still on, I would assume it's on their website because I've been on their website, in addition to speaking with the person who represents them. I've been on their website, so I know, and I believe the application was on there, too. But it's something we can send out before the year ends. The application, I think, if I remember correctly, is due to the end of June. So, we can send it out to our families and say, if you have an interest, this is something that's available.
Thank you. And then the other thing was under cell phones.
Okay.
It said your update was that they can use it during lunch, I think, and wind time?
Yes.
My concern is if wind time would be academic, I don't see how that.
I don't think it said they could. Did it say they could or they couldn't? I think the only change I made is it was called homeroom before. It was saying.
Yeah, it's home, I have it here. I thought it said during home.
Home room slash wind.
Yeah, so you highlighted all seven periods of the school day and homeroom, wind time.
That's when they're not allowed to use it.
Wind time, not used and out of sight. Okay, so, thank you.
Yeah, and that's just an update because we didn't have wind time before. So, now what was homeroom, we're calling wind time. And so, that was just adding that in that spot. And I went ahead and left homeroom and did slash wind time because in case we have a reason we have homeroom one day, I don't know, you know? Yeah, we'll have to keep change, flip-flopping it.
Okay, so, those are my questions. Does anyone else have any questions? And we can question anything in the handbook, right? I mean, other than just the update, if there's anybody.
If you have a concern, I'm happy to answer or something.
I see that you added social probation on parties.
So, it's not actually a new thing. It's in the part of the handbook that talked about social probation, it talked about what earned you social probation, and those things were included. But then in the other part of the handbook where we talked about attendance, we hadn't included social probation there. And because it's a really long document, most people aren't reading everything. So, we just wanted to put the information in. Any place where a kid might be going to the, or a parent might be going to the handbook, we wanted to have that information in all those spots so it didn't feel like, oh, we didn't really talk about this, but now it's over here.
And social probation is, you're keeping them out of all events for 40 days?
20 days is the initial one. And then if they get a second one, it's 40 days. If they get a third one, it's 40 days again from the time of the infraction. So, if they weren't done serving their second 40 days, let's say they were 20 days in, it would start over on that 20 days. So, you're never more than 40 days away from being out of that environment.
So, I guess I just have a concern about the number of days that you're putting on social probation. You're already, so the kids are already getting in trouble. You're already, so the kids already get in trouble, right? Like, and I feel like they're getting punished already and then you're going to keep them out of all activities for 20 days or 40 days.
Right.
Kids are going to make mistakes. Like, and I feel like as adults, we should be the ones, like, helping them make better choices without punishing them for going to social events. I, I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I feel like, I feel like we should revision, revisit social probation. Is it mostly just the days, that like the 20 days? We're already punishing them. Like, I mean, how, it's like you're just keep, it's just like you're just keeping on and on and on. And I, I think it frustrates, like, kids make mistakes. I understand that you need to give them reprimands and, and things. I just feel like if I were a kid, I'd be like, well, I, I mean, here I'm, I'm going to get in trouble, I'm going to be, what's going to stop me from keeping on getting trouble? I mean, I can't go to these things. Like, I feel like some kids, that's what they need is, is the interactions in, in those things and, and maybe, maybe their friends would be like, hey, quit messing up. You're doing stupid things. Like, I just feel like, I feel like we're just double punishing them on a lot of things. And I don't know if we can maybe adjust social probation or talk about like other ways?
Yeah, recommendations.
I mean, it's a discussion, but I, I'm not saying I want to make the decision. I just think-
The part of it is just, like, when you think about what we do do to students, right? So we've got lunch detention, we have in-school supervisory period, we have after-school detention, we have, we have Saturday school. And then you have out-of-school suspension, right? Those are kind of, if you think about what the school can do, right? Parents can take a kid's phone away or they can, you know, there's other things that parents can do. And the school, there's not a lot of tools that we have. And so part of social probation is, we have some students that, and, and, and keep in mind the tardies are per period. It's not like total, like a kids, kids are getting, what does it start with? For, for an excuse for the, for one period within a semester. So there is some grace already built into the system. And keep in mind, teachers at times when there's a legitimate reason why a kid's tardy, a lot of times teachers are giving kids grace in that moment and not even counting it as a tardy. But part of the reason we did social probation on some of these things was if anytime they're in this, in, in school supervision, then they're missing out on class time. And so we have after-school detention, which for our student athletes, and sometimes that needs to be the consequence and you're missing practice, but, so after-school is going to, is going to hit kids in terms of that. Saturday school. So now we really have lunch detention. We have after-school detention, which is going to impact kids' lives. We have Saturday school, it's going to impact kids' lives. And we have social probation, which means you can't go attend, like, watch a game. And so part of it is when we've shown kids grace and we've talked to them and we've done some of those steps, they have to feel some discomfort and that's what a consequence is. And so we're trying to be like, okay, what, you know, what motivates students to, to get their assignments turned in and get to class and, and avoid some of those consequences? And this is, you know, we heard from other schools, like prom is really important to high school kids, right? And so you want prom to be, we had a ton of kids at prom this year, right? And we have high attendance at prom. But it can be one of those things that when you get students that are juniors and seniors in high school, there's not a lot of things that, that feel like a big consequence to kids that we can use to leverage to say, look, education still really matters, right? Getting your, believe it or not, you'd think that just passing your classes and getting your credits would be a huge motivation for kids. But oddly, they just aren't long-term thinkers as much. But not being able to go to a ballgame on Friday night, which is a fun thing to do, for some kids, that's the motivation piece that they're like, man, I want to be able to go to the football game Friday night because it's a blast and we, it's a huge, big community night. And so knowing that that could come, when, once they get to so many offenses and they know that social probation is coming, for a lot of our kids, that has been a big motivator for them. So I-
How do you come up with those numbers of 20 and 40?
I think it had to do with the number of weeks, right? So 20, 20 school days, you know, is going to be basically a month, so.
So school days, it's not calendar days. No, you say it. What do you think that would be?
So I think it's-
So is that four weeks and eight weeks? Is that what we?
Yeah. Let me check the language to see how it's, how it's worded here for you because I don't want to misrepresent them.
Consequences you stated before, right? I mean, always it's-
Often there's, there's a consequence before you go on social probation. It's kind of part of that sequence. And then, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. I was just going to say, I think something like Holly's saying is sometimes we take a kid out of a situation where they aren't going to be able to do things to get themselves in trouble and let them, allow them to be in a situation where they can make a bad choice because they can't be here on a Friday night. And I know that they, there are, like you're saying, consequences are very limited in a school corporation. I understand that. But taking them out of a clean environment, a safe environment, is that the best thing to do for that long a time? I mean, I, I don't know. I, I don't know what the-
Do you look at it at different levels? Like, does 20 have to be like first?
Yeah.
To, you know, trial, run them on five days or 10 days? Or, and I'm curious to know how many kids, how, how many different kids-
Okay.
Did you have to enact social probation on them? Like, how much did it affect?
Yeah. And I can bring, I don't have that in front of me, but I could, I could bring that back prior to the next meeting or I could get that information to you in between. I can get that to Dr. Smith and he can pass that along. It is, just to kind of reiterate what it is, students have to be passing five classes. So that kind of mirrors what we have with athletic participation. And to clarify, good standing is, it, it's not taking the student out of their sport if they're participating in a sport, it's that being a spectator type environment. Discipline, students may not have an out-of-school suspension, so if they put on an out-of-school suspension, then that puts them in social probation. Students must have fewer than six unexcused absences for the school year. So once they hit that sixth unexcused absence. And then students must pass all South Putnam administered drug tests. And part of that came because we'll have other schools ask us, in order for students to attend something there, they'll say, your students need to be in good standing. And prior to this, we didn't have a definition of what good standing meant. And so now we do have that, which has been a, a positive thing. But I can bring to you, I can get that, pull that information for you in terms of how many kids were on social probation this year and then how many were on like 20 days versus 40 days. So you guys can get a sense of kind of that's the impact.
Repeat, did you say, but not names, don't need names, but-
Yeah. Right. Like how many kids hit that 40 days and then, yeah.
So did you say out-of-school suspension automatically gets them on social probation?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Gardner.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Next up, first reading of the athletic handbook update.
Is Ms. Gardner or Mr. Burgess doing this one?
We can kind of tag team on this one. Just kind of going through the, kind of the summary, if that's okay, if we do it the same way. Just kind of things that stand out. The first thing that you'll notice is we had all the language in there about transfers and how that all works. We just stripped that out and just said, basically, they just have to abide by the IHSA guidelines. And since those could be tweaking a little bit here because of the, the new environment that we're in, we thought that would be the best way to approach that. The other thing, some of this on the page nine stuff that you're seeing is, again, it's just clarification. There was some confusion this year about what it means. So our senior athletes, and we just had them named on Monday, we got to announce our male and female senior athletes this year. The spirit of that has been, for as long as I can remember, it's just focused on their senior year. And that's how South Putnam has chosen to approach it. I know some schools might think, well, it would be over their four years of high school or, but we've always-
When did that change? Does it used to be over four years?
No, I don't think so.
I don't-
It's never been over four years.
I think it's always just been the senior year. Yeah. And that's, and so interestingly, all of the rules and all of the points and everything has always just focused on that senior year.
Maybe worded it different back then, maybe.
The plaques themselves, they list everything over your four years, but how it's selected has always been just over the senior year.
So part of that was in terms of punitive things. The question was if a student had something that caused a suspension within athletics, is that going to be anytime during their career or is it just during their senior year? So in the spirit of, since everything else is just about their senior year, we wanted the language to reflect that as well. And we tried to come up with words that we thought were least confusing as possible on that and giving as much clarity.
Is there any possibility of ever thinking of adding the four-year cumulative amounts in, into the factor?
Probably when somebody else becomes senior.
I would say bring that up with that. If you want to change 40-year history, I know you would be the guy that does that.
I would, I would challenge Lee and say, what's your reason for wanting to change it? We don't have to get into that, but that's-
Just, if, if, for instance, if someone that was a four-year athlete and for whatever reason they break a leg their senior year, they, they were the clear winner. They started all four years, every freshman, sophomore, whatever. And then their senior year, whatever, they, they break your leg and they can't compete. Then someone else is in that position that probably shouldn't be, but according to our policy, it's only based off their senior year. So that's the only reason why I would-
And I would tell you, I think it's a great argument. I really do. I think it's a great argument. But I think that's probably why the award is called Senior Athlete.
Senior Athlete.
You know, instead of just the out, you know, just the outstanding athlete. It is the senior, and that's probably why, I mean, I, I, trust me, I can see the argument both ways. I think what you're saying, I mean, a couple of years ago, we had that, a possibility.
Yeah, I agree.
It was pretty close to that maybe happening.
Yeah.
But I, I do understand that, but that's probably why, I'm assuming they've always just, it's the scene, been the senior athlete. And that's why they've kept it that way.
Thank you.
I think that's why you get athletes that join sports their senior years too.
Sure.
But it's based off of two sports, right? Is that like-
You have to, you have to at least participate in two, your senior year. And I, my, my, again, I'm guessing, I haven't been here my whole life, you, you've got more experience than I do. Part of that reason of doing it may be just what, what Holly said, may have been a way to get seniors to be more involved their senior year. A lot of times those seniors get that senioritis, especially spring sports. I don't want play. I'm about done, I'm out of here. Well, this is kind of a little bit of a motivator maybe, and I'm just guessing that maybe that's part of why this award was created, why it was like it is. Just to maybe give those seniors a little more incentive to do something other than get themselves in trouble their, into their senior year.
Right.
And then also on the consequences section, this isn't a new thing. It's stated in another part of the handbook, but because we didn't call it out specifically in that sentence, we thought it, it was a place where we wanted to remind people, if you can't serve out your current consequences in your current season, then they would carry over to the next one. And that's what you see on page 13. It's just adding that language in. It's not new language, but it's just reminding them it carries over. But something that is new is the Student Advisory Committee. That's something that we haven't had at South Putnam. And so Danae Klein was one of the representatives for the IHSA this year and it's something that we had talked about. We did take a group of kids in the fall to the, to the principal's meeting and we took a group of kids. And we hadn't formed the committee yet then, but we just kind of started that process of getting kids more involved and, and having them weigh in and talk about and grow their leadership and sportsmanship. So now we're finalizing that process and getting a, a group in place so that we can have them ready for next year.
So what's the purpose of that?
So part of, part of our student athletes is that they are role models and leaders in our school. Kids look up to them and see them. We've seen that in the Little Eagles program that Danae created and within the building. So this is an opportunity for them to get together as a group and to meet with Mr. Burgess and meet with Mr. Rounds and talk about, kind of like we do with the Student Safety Team, right? Where we get together, we get input from the kids. And then they also get opportunities to go to leadership events and learn more about from other people in the state about sportsmanship and how you lead in a school. So it's also kind of, it's kind of a training program because sort of like train the trainer model, right? Where we train those group of kids and then they go out and lead and talk to other kids in their sports. So we've asked kids to lead in the past, but we've never really had a process for kind of helping train them and have them get together and talk to one another. So this is just adding a little extra support to kids and formality to them. And then the, this is a new thing on page 18. So we allow students to participate in multiple sports. We have one that's sort of your dominant sport and this is what you're saying. But then if capacity allows and timing allows, then a student might be able to go and help another team as well. But we did have some moments this year where we had simultaneous events going on and then we have kids trying to run over and do this sport and then run over and do this sport. And we just felt like it was putting kids in a really hard spot. How are you focused and feel really present in what you're doing if you're thinking about, do I need to be over there in that moment? And so we just wanted to take that pressure off our athletes. And so the thought is if there's two events that are truly occurring simultaneously, now that doesn't mean if there's a ballgame in the morning and there's something in the evening, but if they're truly happening at the same time, they can't be in both sporting events at that same moment.
Is that something that can work out between your coaches? Like, let's say, for instance, Drew ran track and played baseball.
Right.
There was a couple instances, he pitches a lot. So, well, I don't know about a lot, but he pitches. If he's not going to pitch that night and the coach says, can, he, he can just go do track, we're not going to play him, we're not going to, even though baseball is his main sport, is that something that they need to work out between the coaches and ahead of time? It, it, you know?
Something to the coaches, yes.
Okay.
We just don't, we just don't want them to be in the outfield and then wondering if their event's being called, right?
They gotta go run the 4x1, take your baseball cleats off, put lights on.
Yeah.
I think what you're trying to say is there's flexibility.
Right.
They have to choose.
Yeah. Not try to be in two places at the same time because that's just too hard for a kid to navigate.
Even if, like, because you have to choose what your main one is, right? Your, your primary.
You choose a primary and, and so if you choose a primary, let's say like Drew's primary was baseball this year.
If there were a track meet and he knows he's not going to play baseball.
Right.
He could go run track even on, on the same night, as long as the coaches are in agreeance. And that could get a lot, I understand, but-
And it probably goes a little bit against the letter of what it really is.
Yeah.
But if you've got two coaches that agree, I'm going to tell you as a coach, and I'm the primary, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, sure.
But if the two coaches can agree on that and that's, and they have, that has been But if the two coaches can agree on that and that's, and they have, that has been pre-arranged and done, probably in the case you're, and the night you were talking about, what should have happened? The coaches agreed upon that, Drew should have went and run like he did.
Yeah.
He should have stayed at the track.
Yeah, correct.
Go back to the baseball field.
Yeah.
You might go in and pinch, which I think he might.
He did, he went in and pitched.
Ran in, he ran track.
So that's why we're changing that. That's probably, no. It's because, you know, he did it all. But that's kind of what we're trying to do, just clean that up. So it's, that puts a lot of pressure on the kid.
Sure. It was, at one hundred percent. Why, one, I think, was the same way.
He had a couple of instances. This takes the pressure off the kid. Let's let the adults make the decision.
Yeah, sure.
That's what you're saying though, right? The adults are making the decision.
Right.
So the athlete either is obligated to his primary coach or his primary coach may say, well, tonight, you know, I don't really need you, you go do this, right? I mean, it's not, I don't think it's good to leave it up to the student.
No, no, that's what, yeah, it's up to the adults, yeah.
Yeah, our kids, we have good kids in general. They don't want to let her, they don't want to let their coaches down.
Yeah.
So I, you know, we're going to count on the adults here hopefully to make the right decision. And if they don't, then we can deal with the adults. But the kids don't need to be put in that position where they have to make that choice.
And a no penalty to the student?
No penalty to the student. Is there ever a, a hope that they'll be able to dual, uh, letter? I know that some schools do that. I saw on their board, there was one girl had sixteen letters in her high school career. That's impressive, but I don't know if that's ever a possibility.
I think it'd be hard now with, because the IHSA rules where that to compete in a sectional, which is kind of what we base everything on, you have to compete in seventy-five percent
Correct.
of the possible events.
Yes.
And to be able to compete in seventy-five percent of the baseball games, let's say, because we're talking about baseball, seventy-five percent of the track meet, man, that is almost impossible.
It's, it's really tough to do that.
And that's probably what, a lot of these things may have happened before those rules were in place.
Yeah, it was a few years ago.
You could have had sixteen letters, but that's probably why it would be hard to do.
Thank you.
I just have, sorry.
No, go ahead.
My question was on the, the consequences.
Okay.
Not specifically these, but since we started the cessation program.
Right.
Last year.
Yep.
Are, is Mr. Scomp, is he keeping like data on that? So we see if that's actually worthwhile or if it's working or if it's helping the students or?
And I can bring information back on the cessation program. We didn't have a lot of students that participated this year. Yeah, I mean, yeah.
I don't know if that's good or not.
But of the students that did participate, it was very meaningful for them. I, I'm really glad that we added this programming in. I think it's incredible. I think the partnership with Cummins is really great. I think the accountability where they have to continue to participate in the drug testing program has been really important. And even getting feedback from the kids who have been involved, they said that really did, that accountability is really what helped keep them clean during that time so they could really focus on their health. So I'm, I'm excited about the, the program that we added last year and consider it a great success. We didn't have a lot of kids who did it, but for the kids who did do it, it was really meaningful. But I can bring, I can bring some numbers in for you if you're curious about that.
Do you do like an exit interview with them or a, I don't know, something? You know, you said you heard from the kids, but is that being kept as part of fact?
We don't have a form. I mean, we don't have like a specific form of questions that we've been asking. So that's a, that's a good input that maybe that's something we could formalize a little bit more. I'm talking about like the counselors. We just had a meeting with Cummins where we do a summary meeting at the end of the year and we talked through some of the program that we did. And so the people in the room who had worked with those students talked about the feedback they had received from those kids. And that's where, but we, I didn't, I don't have a specific like exit ticket like you're talking about, so.
Do we ever get in touch, back in touch with them? Like, let's say they completed that sober year. And in six months, does Cummins reach, do they reach out to them again and, and find out where they are? Are they doing okay? Do they need help? Like, I mean, because let's face it, addictions are hard.
Absolutely.
And, and, I'm, yeah, I'm just curious, like, did you hear anything in there that, that they will reach out to them to offer the support later?
Yeah, we do, again, we don't have a formal, like, this is a, a specific set of time. Our school counselors have been the ones that have been kind of following up with kids just because the Cummins part is just a little bit more rigid because of funding and those kinds of things. But it's something that we could look at. And I could talk to Cummins about like, what would that look like on their end? If we did maybe a, you know, like you said, three months later, a certain, and, and do that follow-up meeting and, and talk again about what have you learned about yourself? What, what kind of coping mechanisms have you done? How are, how are you dealing with the things that you're dealing with? The touch base.
Yeah. I don't know what statistics say, like, when, when they're most likely to relapse or have those tendencies, you know?
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a model that Cummins has been looking at. They've been working with other places and stuff too, is, is this, this piece that we've been doing just because they've really liked, they got really good feedback too on how it's been working. So, yeah, that's good feedback. Yeah.
Next up is first reading of the elementary handbook update.
Mrs. wants you to go over those.
Hello. Mrs. Neese and I worked together on our handbook. We had just a few things. One, tardies, for some reason last year, we didn't have tardies in there. So we added tardies this year and we went along with what our absence things are. So it said for five tardies, a phone call, seven tardies, attendance letter, nine tardies, another phone call, and ten tardies, a meeting with parents to discuss next steps.
Is it usually the parents that make those kids late anyway?
And see, at our age, for sure, right? So, and I.
I'm glad to see, like, you know, like, you're, you're.
Right, and so if we have to buy an alarm clock for a parent, then we'll do that. And then we went with dress code. We went off of the high schools with dress code. Mostly at our age, it's the short shorts and the spaghetti strap shirt, tank tops. So we just put that language in there for this year.
But I noticed the high school is now allowing tank tops.
But not the spaghetti.
Spaghetti strap.
But, but you have no tank tops either.
No spaghetti strap halter top.
Strap sheer tank or tube tops.
Well, that's prob, that's probably because we just made, that, that's probably just a mix on our part, yeah.
I just was.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we want to be the same.
Yeah, I know, that's what I thought.
We do.
And so one of us will have to, I'm talking spaghetti strap, right? We do not want those.
Right.
So we, so we allowed sleeveless shirts. And we, because we were allowing sleeveless shirts, because the word tank top was still in there, it was creating some confusion because really the idea is to cover under clothing. And so a lot of tank tops are, are achieving that goal. And, and again, if they're fitted shirts, there, there, there's nothing indecent about the look of that. We just wanted to avoid the, the torn-out shirts that are open on the side or the spaghetti stripe thing where under clothing could be exposed. So that's why we struck the word tank tops from our, we're asking to strike that for next year is just to clear up that confusion.
We'll then strike ours. It's just spaghetti strap. So I think maybe I copied yours to put in ours maybe before they switch that up a little bit. The next one, not just complete a background check, but to pass the background check. We wanted to add that part in there.
I noticed the language in the high school, middle school handbook also mentioned admin approval in that same line. Is that something you want to think about as well? Or is that not really a touch issue?
Well, so with our background checks, they always come to us. If there's anything on their background and then we do pass, like, we say they pass, okay? So we can add that language.
I'm just, I just noticed a difference and that was all I was like.
And we want to be the same, so we'll add those couple, those words. We want to be as, as close to them as we can, you know, so. Let's see. It said before that the conference, if we were going to retain a student, that we needed to have a conference before the third nine weeks, first week after the third nine weeks. And we just changed it to say that we have to have it scheduled because there are times it's right around spring break time. And so as long as we have it scheduled, and if, you know, we're doing our job, our parents already know this throughout because we've been talking about how they're doing in class, so. The next one, breakfast. So we had taken that out for this year on our two-hour delays, not to have breakfast because our lunches start at ten fifty. And we're going to put that in, but it's going to be a grab-and-go breakfast. So it is just go back to their classrooms with them. So we added that back in. And then our PLCs, this year we had them on Monday. Not a good day to have PLCs. Wednesdays, so we're going to try to do it Wednesday, or not try, we are going to do it Wednesdays next year. It doesn't change for when our kids come. Our kids still come at the same time. We bus them in at the same time. It's just that we have IA coverage and counselor coverage at that time while our teachers are in meetings for the forty minutes.
In the classroom or?
So we meet, we meet with teachers in the library and then all of our kids are in the big gym. We have had the conversation of maybe splitting up primary in the little gym and then intermediate in the big gym and doing something like that. So we're in discussion on if that needs to be included for next year. The bus bar number, we just took it out. They no longer have a fax number. And then we added again what Mrs. Gardner had said about our students coming to after-school things with supervision. So I think that's it. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then the first reading of the high ability handbook update.
Mrs. Neese is going to be going over that briefly.
High ability was pretty simple. Most of it was just name changes from Debbie to me. There was some courses we offer now that we didn't offer before, so changing those, updating those, taking out old tests that we don't give anymore, putting the new tests in. I think the only other big change is with kindergarten identification, we changed that percentile. It was ninety-sixth percentile for kindergarten and we just upped that to ninety-eighth percentile. We, we're seeing that identification didn't stay consistent from kindergarten to second grade. A lot of times we lose, we would lose over half of the kids that had been identified in kindergarten. We think that that's mostly because a lot of that is just kids who went to preschool, kids who were very involved, they were just kind of ahead on the achievement at that point. So we just upped it to ninety-eight percent. And it was actually the state high ability person that suggested that. Okay.
Regarding, regarding the growth on the I-ready and math assessments, and I think maybe you told me this, but those have to be like, do they have a ceiling on them? Because if so, that, that, that can't really count as an assessment.
As far as grade level, it doesn't. So it will drop below grade level and it'll go above grade level. So it'll even go in the.
And math assessments both?
The, so ready will, so I-ready, not I-read. I-read is like I-read three for the.
We're just not using I-read, you're just using.
Okay.
Then on the please contact, do we still use building reps? Are there still building reps? My suggestion is that you just have them contact you.
Okay.
And then you, just because I think all the high ability reps are probably in a classroom, right?
Yes, yes, they are, yeah. That's with the communications they put out. So like when we do the high ability identification letters and everything, they're all with me and I am the contact person for that, yeah.
I have some concerns about the ninety-eight versus ninety-six percentile because if you think about it, we don't even have a hundred students. So it just limits the, the pool, but again. Yeah.
We are doing, so we are, we created a watch list too. So what we're doing is putting students who are close into that watch list and we're still pulling them and giving them the, like, the same, the same type of accommodations. But we're, we're enriching them in the same way. They're just not receiving the official title of being in high ability.
I guess.
Did the person who suggested that change, did they know that we're such a small group?
Yeah, um, yes, and, and. I don't know that that changes the problem anyway. The, the big thing is I don't want to remove kids from high ability. I just want to try and make sure that we're identifying them well to begin with because that turns into a really hard conversation, right? And we have students who will end up, it's not even like when they get to second grade or to fifth grade, because those are our two, our other two elementary identification years. It's not like it's just now they're testing at like ninetieth percentile. We'll have kids who then are testing single digits and they're still in the high ability program, which is just, I feel like it's a blow to the students and a blow to the parents whenever they get removed. And I want to try and not do that to them if we can avoid it. But I don't want to take services away. So we do want to go ahead and keep trying to enrich them, the students, keep trying to pull them up. And we tell the elementary teachers, if you have any indication, it doesn't even have to be based off of that. We have our win time, you can go ahead and pull them anyway. We're trying to serve more students, but not give them the official identification until we feel really confident that it's, it's a good placement for them and we're probably not going to have to remove that.
Does that explain?
Yeah. My, my biggest concern is that, I mean, I understand the achievement piece, right? The performance piece, because with PLCs and with, with win time and all that, those kinds of kids are easy to do things for, right? And know what to do for them because they're showing it. The kids that I'm most concerned about, that I want to make sure that our corporation is identifying at as young as possible, which I know is, that's a whole nother thing, right? But is that cognitive score or the potential? Because oftentimes we, we have kids coming from homes that they don't have anything to help show, to help us see what they know until they get to school and they start learning. And those are the kids that I think is. So maybe there's a way you can just keep the potential.
And that's honestly not what we're seeing. It's in the achievement, it's not in the potential. So even changing that percentile, it wouldn't have. We, a lot of times our kids are in that ninety-eighth, ninety-ninth, or they're below the ninety. There's not a lot of that in between. So if that, for potential, if we want to say a ninety-sixth percentile, then we put them in, I, I don't think that's really going to affect our numbers much, if at all. And I'm completely comfortable with that. It's really in the achievement part and kindergarten.
So you're not seeing those marginal students, you're seeing a definite split.
It's not anywhere near as close inside of our potential.
The other thing on the, I think it's on the second page. This, some sixth graders are placed in pre-algebra based on NWA, I've heard blah, blah, blah. And those are from referrals from teachers and administrators. It just seems sort of, I don't know, subjective. I don't know that that needs to be in there, I guess.
Okay, yeah, I can look at it. I didn't have my, like, I had the elementary one pulled up, so.
It was just the, and it, we switched the language to eighth grade math, you know, because we, and we don't do NWA. It says some sixth graders are placed in eighth grade math based on I-ready, I-learn scores and referrals from teachers and it's.
So you just want to remove the referrals from teachers' part?
Well, I don't know that any of it needs to be there because you said that that's the. Well, they're just changing progression. No, they're not, they're just calling eighth grade math. But that's, it's already said somewhere else.
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't change any of that. The only thing that I had switched out was just the pre-algebra in eighth grade. So that wasn't a change that I made, but if it's a change that you want, then I can.
The referral would be in case.
I don't know that it's necessary.
In case a student didn't score well, but the teacher knows, right? That they could be, that, that would be what the referral would be.
But that's what's not clear. If these, if this is an identified student who is placed in eighth grade math, even though his math score on the I-ready was not, is that what you're saying?
This just simplifies it by saying with the referral from the teacher, instead of saying all that other stuff. So the, the teachers know.
So what's implied on stated, which would make it more clear, is if we said identified students. Okay, just one more. On the AP and identified, so in the last section, high ability, high school students enrolled in advanced courses in language arts, math, and science. An identified high ability student may elect to take advanced placement. Well, I don't know, I can, I can talk to you about this one. Because it, I would change that to students may self-identify because technically they don't have to be an identified student to take an AP course if they qualify. But if they do qualify, they're probably high ability, whether they've been identified or not. So then in that case, they're self-identifying. You stick out A and identified and say, A student. That's what I'm saying. A student may self-identify by electing to take.
I don't change, like, in the SIS, like, actually. I don't change, like, in the SIS, like, actually change in harmony, just anyone who decides to take that class? That we could then say at that point, now you're high ability.
Well, the, okay, so part of that is, if it would be good if you could, is because like some of the grants, they'll pay for some things in an AP class. But if all the kids haven't been identified, then those kids don't get the money. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do. And maybe a misunderstanding too. I just, we'll have kids who will potentially sign up for an AP class that end up failing and then get removed from the class, right? So I don't know how comfortable I feel about like actually changing in harmony to say someone's high ability just because they took a class. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I understand.
But am I misunderstanding what you're saying, or is that? No, you are, that's what this is for, to try and like, get this, yeah.
This is where your interest is, right? So like, if we were talking about gas pipelines being moved, I, you'd be like, of course, you know.
And we don't want to, we want to make sure we have a good handbook and that we're doing what's right for our students. So I like the questions, I appreciate them, because it might just be things we didn't think through or things we need to think more on. So never apologize for asking questions about that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Once you're buried in it for like studying it, sometimes you need to step back and have it, you know, somebody else look at it, give a fresh look. Cause you think you know what you're saying, but sometimes you don't, you don't.
Or it feels really clear to me, because like, we, I was in that meeting where we typed it up, but it doesn't read the same way as what our intention was in it. So now this is good.
Thank you.
No, thank you guys.
Okay. Um, H, consideration of the addition of varsity girls wrestling for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So you want to talk about the adding the girls wrestling?
Yeah. Yeah, the IHSA has started this two years ago. Has officially made wrestling an official IHSA school. So what we did this past year is we kind of kept it as a club sport. Had the coaches kind of give us, you know, keep track of their numbers, give us an idea, monitor it for a year. We've got, I had a call out, I had twelve girls sign up for it. Ten of the twelve wrestled in the club last year. So it's not like just twelve new girls, it was actually ten of the twelve. So what we would like to do is go ahead and make that an official, an official sport. That'll be, uh, they, they actually have, that's the IHSA tournament, they have their own sectional, regional, semi-state and state.
I'm embarrassed to say I don't know what our numbers were for boys wrestling.
Boys are up right now. Our boys' numbers are pretty good. We're about thirty with our boys. We've had years where we've been down ten or twelve. So, but the girls, yeah, and these are mostly younger girls, freshmen, sophomore.
No, well, there'll be a buffer period for girls that have been previously wrestling, wrestling with boys?
They were not allowed to wrestle with boys last year, that buffer period. The only way they were allowed to wrestle last year with boys is if they wrestled in the boys' state tournament the year before. And we had nobody that had did that. So that's why we kept it as a club sport. So that, just to kind of get an idea of the numbers. And then, so we'll go ahead and put together a full schedule for the girls.
Great.
Everyone else in our conference, we were the only one in the conference that didn't actually have it last year.
That's what I was going to ask, was how many others?
Everybody in our conference has it, everybody else in the county has it, so we're going to fall right into place with that.
How many did you pull from other sports?
I don't, I really don't think a lot of them were in other sports, because they were doing the club anyway. I know at least those ten girls, you're probably always going to have one or two.
Here, here, I'm just stirring the pot here.
Yeah, cause you might, you're going to get.
Well, that's soccer, I mean, like.
Yeah, you are stirring the pot there, so. I'm glad this is stirred in here, I'll just shake you. How heavy is this?
That's not up for consideration.
But this balances out everything, right?
It does balance. We have, in, in the fall right now, in the fall, we have three opportunities for females, three for males. In the spring, we have three and three. Winter, we have three for the males and only two for the females. So by adding this, wrestling would give us three opportunities in each season for both our, our boys and girls.
But previously it was still three, because they could wrestle with the boys.
They could have wrestled with the boys, yes. They had that opportunity, it was co-ed.
Did we have any that wrestled with the boys?
We did before last year. But when they, but they didn't wrestle in the state tournament the year before. So, but the IHSA rule, they weren't allowed to last year. And then we'll just, like, I think that within that same proposals to add that, and then to add a coach, we'll just add one high school, one vars, head coach for the girls. We'll monitor those numbers for a year or two. If we see those numbers start getting up into the eighteen, twenty, twenty-two type of thing, I'm probably going to come back and say at that time, we'd like to get an assistant coach for the wrestling program. Numbers in wrestling, they say right now, one to every ten to fourteen, one coach per ten to fourteen athletes. So if we start getting above, we see that number growing in the next year or two, then we're probably going to have to look at maybe adding an assistant.
Boys and girls are at the same time?
They're at the same time. It's kind of like swimming. Girls wrestling starts two weeks before the boys' season, ends about three weeks before the boys'. Kind of the same way boys and girls swimming do.
So did, did your boys coach the girls during their club, or did you?
During their club, uh-huh.
So no junior high, is this just going to be?
Junior high, we're going to go ahead and let them go co-ed. They can still wrestle. If we have girls interested, we'll allow them then to still go ahead and wrestle co-ed, is what most of the other schools are doing. Again, you know, if we see down the road something, but we can still do that at the junior high level.
When you say they're wrestling co-ed, you mean boys can wrestle girls, girls can wrestle boys?
At the middle school level, yes.
And if they go to the state at the middle school level, then they get, or no, it has to be, has to be varsity?
Yeah, there is, at the middle school level, there is no state tournament, so, yeah.
And, um, so my biggest concern, the same with, well, for the boys as it is for the girls, but especially for the girls, is the weight loss business, can you?
Yes. There, there's only a certain percentage that wrestlers are allowed to lose. At the start of the season, within the first three weeks of the season, uh, all the wrestlers have to do a body percent, uh, percent fat, body percent fat test. And at that time, then there's a formula there that will dictate then throughout the wrestling season, the maximum number of pounds that an athlete's allowed to.
Like two weight classes dropping or something like that.
It's, yeah, it's a percentage now, yeah. And our coaches, our coaches don't do it, and I don't do it. I don't allow the coaches to do it, just because coaches can be swi, our athletic trainer does that. Tony oversees that whole program. He does the percentage body test at the beginning of the season. And he charts that then throughout the season. And, uh, we actually had an athlete this year that didn't get a rest on the tournament, because he'd gotten sick. He lost, and it was, he was a lighter weight class, hundred-and-twenty-five, hundred-and-twenty-eight. He lost so much weight due to his illness, that he actually lost more than the percentage he was allowed and wasn't allowed to wrestle in the state tournament. So it is monitored through. Uh-huh, Tony gets all that information to me, and then I have all of it. And then we just, then we have to verify that, uh, when we put our kids into the tournament list on the IHSA.
Thank you.
Varsity girls wrestling for next school year.
A second.
Wade made the motion to, um, add varsity girls wrestling for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Joe seconded that, all those in favor? Yeah. Consideration of Chartwell's renewal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Our initial contract with Chartwell started back in January. Um, it was a six-month short-term contract to make sure everything was a good fit and everything that they had said they were going to carry through with. Everything went well. So we are seeking to renew the contract for this upcoming school year. All those details are detailed, there are extensive details in your board packets.
No major, no major issues? Like, what were some of the, the initial hurdles?
Oh, just getting, uh, food supplies worked out and, uh, timing and coordination. But they did a great job of getting it staffed, and it was always staffed. So that was, that was my biggest concern and one of the reasons why we went that direction. And so they were able to, to, uh, carry out on that. And they've, they've been great, been a great partner.
I'll second it.
Holly made the motion to approve the Chartwell's renewal for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Wade seconded that, all those in favor? Very easy. Item J, consideration of bus sale to Area Thirty.
Yep. Um, the, the details of this are in your board packet. Last week, the, uh, Area Thirty Board of Directors authorized the purchase of, uh, at our board meeting last week, and now we're just needing South Putnam to follow through and approve the sale of that, uh, bus. Um, all that's detailed in your board packets. Mr. Ogborne's here for questions. He did all the backend work on this and coordinated everything with Area Thirty Director. So if you have any questions, Mr. Ogborne.
Have you had a bus before? Is this like your first bus purchase?
Yeah.
No, they had a bus that they used. Uh, mainly for training, uh, for students that were looking to get their Class B CDL and their S and B, uh, those endorsements. And they also used it for field trips, uh, but it's up in years and falling apart. And so they were looking to, to replace that, that we had some that, um, were aging out now that we're purchasing new buses. And, um, specifically looking for a trip bus that had the storage underneath.
So they don't use it to pick up and transport kids back and forth, or do they?
Only for field trips and things like.
Those are ours, right? Our kids, they're, those are our.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we use our buses to transport the students to and from Area Thirty. Um, Area Thirty uses their bus, this bus, uh, for field trips.
So it would be a mix of our students, all the county students.
This one we were going to trade in, I assume, or?
Yeah, yeah. So this works out really nicely, because trade-in, uh, price is very low. We're talking like four to five thousand max. And auction, uh, prices are, I've varied. Ted Everts Auctioneers had some that went through a couple of rounds, and they were in the two thousand up to like five thousand range. So this is a good price, but it also helps Area Thirty, because for them to go purchase one from a dealership, that was kind of how, uh, we based that price, was what dealerships were charging. And it's, it's a good bus, you know, there's still life left in it for them. But it, it kind of helps both.
I think the last time we sold a bus, was it, we just got two thousand dollars for it? It's been a while.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Anyway, so.
When we sold one out, right, yeah. We usually trade, yeah. And that's kind of why we've held on to, uh, some of them, because the trades had been so low and it was better just to keep it, um, and use it for a spare when we needed it, so.
Thank you. I move to approve the bus sale in Area Thirty.
A second.
Wade, you lead?
Yes.
Holly made the motion to approve the bus sale to Area Thirty. Wade seconded that, all those in favor? Consideration of Athletic Annex update.
Yes, and we're asking for approval, uh, to move forward with updates to the inside of the Athletic Annex Building. Um, there have not been any significant updates to that building since it was built. It's actually, um, on the inside, quite a mess, if you've been through there, uh, with some extensive deferred maintenance. We saw several quotes for the various parts of the renovation, uh, seeking approval of those updates, which are detailed in your board packets. All the quotes that were, uh, they're dealt with. Mr. Burgess is here to answer any other questions as far as the maintenance as well. He's part of that process, this is Gardner, so.
Is there a total kind of gunning, or just kind of removing old equipment?
Burgess, you want to talk to all that, you were, as far as what all we're doing in there?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, going to take out all the existing lockers. Replace all the existing with new lockers, to actually add, add some lockers, bigger lockers in there. Uh, they'll put the new concrete pad in there. We're going to take the one shower area, actually turn that into part of the locker room itself, so that it's all opened up in there. Put shower stalls in the, the one shower, the existing shower. The days of the, just the one open room, like, just kids don't like that anymore. So, uh, we're going to actually put stalls in there, so that would take care of that. HVAC going in there, you know, we've never had air in there. It's been a breeding ground for staph infection for years. It's just, it's, you know, we've got two big cattle fans in there. It's, it's not good. So we'll have, update all the HVAC in there, uh, fresh paint. Paint the floors, take care of the floors in there.
And the concession stand as well.
And the concession stand, we'll also, we'll tell, we're going to actually take that one back wall out of the concession stand. Why it's there, I don't know. Uh, take it out, uh, with some fresh paint. And same thing, the floor there, maybe some upgrades in, in the cabinets there. The visitors' lot, visitors' junior high locker room, actually junior high locker room. Going to go in, fresh paint with it, take care of the floor in there, put shower stalls in there also for the junior high teams.
Restrooms, anything there?
Restrooms, yeah. There was fresh paint, uh, in there with the restrooms, continue the HVAC in there. New stall dividers, uh, and then update any of the toilet sinks, any of those things that needed to be updated. Something that's like, you remember, it's, probably hasn't been touched since it was built.
I think you mentioned also the concessions.
And then the other concession, yeah. I actually got the session with the wall and everything in there.
Thank you. I move to approve the Athletic Annex updates.
I'll second it.
We made the motion to approve the Athletic Annex update. Wade seconded it, all those in favor? Um, consideration of the new weight room equipment and the equipment update.
So this is, uh, part of the original design conversation, uh, going back to actually almost a couple of years. Um, knowing that we would have to add some equipment and refurbish, uh, the equipment that we had to make it new for the new space and be functional. Want to make sure that, uh, the equipment works well, it's, uh, safe and also will help maintain the floor, the new floors. So there's certain weights and, that are covered and coated, so that they, they don't crack cement, those types of things. So, um, anyway, this is all part of the cost factors for the Philadellos project, which is the owner-supplied equipment. So it's not part of a bid package, this is what we as owners of the, of, of, uh, facility have to provide. Seeking approval not to exceed the Pro Power bid that's in the board packets. I have a few more sources that are also providing a quote. We have actually one that was added today into the packets. But most likely, not sure that all the equipment would be compatible with what we already have. That's when you have a particular model, and you want to make sure everything else matches and, and works. And so the students know that, and are familiar with that equipment, uh, from a safety standpoint. We do currently have Pro Power equipment, um, so the hope will be that, uh, we use their equipment for a service interop, interop, intercompatibility. And not to mention all the aesthetic look of it, uh, for all the new design, we want to make everyone sure it looks good as well.
I have a question on the trade-ins.
That's, that was going to be my question too.
Well. And, you know, or, like, I feel like we shouldn't have anything left to trade in. Like, we got, like, that's not any new equipment that you're trading, right?
No.
Like.
The trade-in, and we talked about that as part of that, and really that could be, we could, that could be, you could strike that out of that. There's nothing that we're trading in.
Okay. The glue, because the glued hambages, are those like the GHB ones that are sitting on the back wall? Like, those are brand new. That's not, that's not what you meant.
No, no. And I think that's why there was, there was an addition of two more glued hams to go with the ones that are there.
I mean, I don't know why you'd want to trade any dumbbells in or weights.
No, there, there was, there was, and that's why we said on that, fifteen, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars was the trade-in. But at two dollars, at two dollars a pound, you're not getting, there's nothing to trade in.
And I was trying to fathom, like, what, how much of it is really trading in? And it sounds like, you know, if, if it was a bunch of equipment, I could say that was a really low number. But if it's just a few things, it's like, well, maybe, but it did, it didn't impact the total dollar figure much at all.
No. And there's, because there was nothing that, after we went through it and looked at everything, there was nothing to trade in, you know. And, you know, weights themselves are two dollars a pound. So fifteen hundred dollars isn't going to, so. Yeah. We'd rather than trade those things in, we can refurbish a lot of those things, you know. Any of those weights and things, and those can all be reused.
I feel like it's a huge amount of money. And it looks to me, when I read through everything, I mean, I get that we have ten, well, I call them stations, but according to other people, they're called racks. I could, I could, and there are ten racks or stations on the, um, design. So I, I get adding four and then supplying those with all the bells and whistles that you have to have, right?
then supplying those with all the bells and whistles that you have to have, right? But on this list that we have from Pro Power, which I think is a good way to go because to make everything look the same, which then makes me think, well, if they can make everything look the same and we're getting the same equipment, are we replacing everything with something that has this logo on it? And how much extra are we paying for the logos for it to look great? I mean, I get that too, but if we're just talking basically, this is one classroom. One classroom is all this is, and we're, we're spending two, almost two hundred thousand dollars on one classroom. If we could save anything at all, I mean, I get it has to be, you know, you gotta have the desks, or you gotta have whatever it is.
It's one classroom, but it's filled every class period.
I was gonna, well, so are all the elementary classrooms.
Seven kids are in there.
Or all the high school classrooms, the science classrooms, but, you know what I'm saying? I just trying to put it in perspective, and I, let me hear, I have a question. The racks that we're painting, it says we're painting blue parts of existing racks to what?
No, we're gonna, they're just gonna repaint them blue. It's the existing ones we have in there, they've just been beat up with the, you know, bars hitting them and different things, so they're just gonna come in, sand those, clean those up, and paint them for us.
So they'll look new for the whole weight set, everything will look new, so.
Right, well, okay, but I went through, you know, you can tell the things that are going for the new, the four more spaces, right? But, and you can kind of tell, I kind of could figure out, well, there's six of those and they only needed four, so that means two of our old ones maybe need to be replaced. I can, I can, I can do all that.
But we're not getting rid of anything, though, because most of what we have is new.
Correct. We're not getting, we're not getting rid of anything.
Right, okay.
How many students, how many students are in that, run through that?
Well, that's part of, like, when I told you earlier that we went from eighth, we're moving general PE to eighth grade, part of that is to free up an extra PE teacher at times to be in there, because we have thirty to forty kids who are trying to be in that space. So that's been part of our design is, we, when they put in the fieldhouse, we put in that big rolling door so we can actually open up that weight room area, and they can do agility work out in the fieldhouse as well. And so there's several periods where we're gonna actually have that team taught because there's so many kids in there.
Yeah.
And, and that also frees up, you know, we, that program just keeps growing, more and more kids want to be part of that weightlifting and agility, and, and part of it is students who are in our athletic programs who are seeing, you know, we're breaking all kinds of track records right now, right? We're, we continue to have more and more success in a lot of our, in our swim program and our football program and basketball and volleyball, and, and a lot of that success that we're seeing is because we have really strong student athletes. And the amazing thing that, that Mr. Sorrell does in his program is, it's cool to be strong at South Putnam, and it's cool for, you know, and, and healthy for our male and female athletes. And so it's really been incredible to see, and, and it's a program that was seeded years ago by somebody in this room too, right, that worked on that program and really seeded a strong lifting program, and we've just continued to expand it. So this is kind of taking it to that next level and making sure we have enough equipment for a lot of kids to be on stations at the same time. And then, I know one of the things that Chuck Sorrell mentioned too is getting the weights up off the floor, because if you go in our weight room right now, you see a lot of things, and so we're trying to clean that space, and, and we want to keep it healthy, and I think just getting it to new space is gonna make it healthier, right? But we were talking about the annex and making sure that we're keeping those spaces clean and healthy, and part of that is to have them up on the racks, being able to put things away easily so they're easily identifiable and putting things in each station. And so this package, I know it's a lot all at once, but to be able to get it and establish it and get everything the way it's being laid out, the way it's gonna be, allows our students to, to take care of the space and to have the kind of space that we're proud of, and we use it all periods of the day. We use it seven periods a day and then after school as well, so.
How many non-athletes students use, take that class?
I can't give you a number right now, but we do have kids that, that's part of that form when they're saying, hey, why are they taking it? They're either taking it because they're in a sport or because they have a personal health plan, and so they cooperate with Mr. Sorrell, and they're like, hey, what are my weightlifting goals and things as well? It, it feels like, almost all.
Two hundred and forty-five kids I think signed up at the high school.
Right now.
To take that class next year, so.
What'd you say?
We have, I think there's two hundred and forty-five kids that are signed up to take that course.
Two hundred and forty-five in the high school, that's not counting your sports, like.
That's, that's taking advanced PE during the day, I think it's two hundred and forty-five.
Yeah, two hundred and forty-five, and our school has three hundred and sixty-three in our high school. So two hundred thousand dollars for two hundred and forty-five of this.
Okay.
That's one, like, that's, that's a, that's a.
One sixty-nine, come on, one, one seventy.
This.
Not two.
Well, she said you wanted, I was just saying, that she, she, you're throwing, so it's only one seventy, we have, which proves my point even more, you have two, two hundred and forty-five of the three hundred and sixty-three. That's pretty good.
Okay, okay, so let's say it's, but, the way I understand it, it's set up for a very specific kind of strength training, so, and, and that's okay, if that's what the PE, and I get that, and that's what other schools are going to, and whatever. All right, so, but if we want to increase that, so we have a weight room that we're spending two hundred thousand dollars, excuse me, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars on, then what about, what about the coaches? The, the coaches that don't do that kind of strength training maybe, did, did, do they have, are they a part of this list, or is this just specific for the kind of advanced PE that is being taught?
Who's going to go in and use those? Look, so did you?
Not necessarily.
Get ready bikes? I mean, I use the rack at my gym.
Didn't we just get rid of some of, didn't we just get rid of some exercise bikes?
They were pretty poor, if I remember.
Maybe, but if we didn't use them, and now we're spending, you know, six thousand dollars on four, is there even room in the, in the?
That's a serious cardio. So, so if you're not one that's just going in there to bulk up, these bikes will allow you to.
Some of these bikes are also used for injury rehab, so.
So you're gonna have one class of three kids, and you're gonna have four injured people at any one time in that one class?
There's a lot of injuries in sports too. I mean, there's, like, that, that also.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out a way to pare this down. Okay, so then I'll move on to this.
Sounds great.
So all these things that have the customer logo on them, are those a total replacement for everything we have in there? I mean, do we have, I don't know what they are. Whatever bumpers, I understand, those are what you drop everything on, right? The, I don't know, any, all these, the dumbbell, anything that has our logo on it, all the weights, right? The new weights. How much extra are we paying for the logos just to make them look great? That's what I want to know, and I can't tell that it's on here. Can we save any money at all? Anything at all?
I think you're talking pennies on the dollar by adding a logo.
But I don't know that.
Be near.
I mean, if a weight is.
Are you asking for it to be itemized in the, in the quote?
I guess.
What that would be.
What's the difference between a generic weight?
What do we need to fill the room, and what are we getting just because we want the fun stuff or because we want more than what we need? Because we think we've got all this money to spend all of a sudden? Because even ten thousand dollars could go a long way somewhere else in a classroom, perhaps, or on an HVAC system.
I'm sure you can get that right.
You complained about the sound of the, the shower that I can keep hearing over here, hit and miss engine over here. Sorry, had to get that in.
I mean, okay, so let me ask you this, are you, are you okay with approving up to this amount, but you still want to see the differences in the prices, like?
I think it's not gonna make any difference. I, I just want to note.
And I heard you say that it made sense to use the, it made sense to use the Pro Power, right? It makes sense to use Pro Power as our, as our, as it would match and everything's the same and everything, but we're, at the same time, we're, we're being asked to approve the not to exceed, you know, the current Pro Power. Is there a dollar figure we can ask them to aim for that you're thinking?
I don't have any, I don't have any idea of what things cost, other than Mr. Burgess just said every pound is two, which is every two, wait.
For a free weight, it's about two dollars a pound.
Two dollars a pound is what I was trying to say. And so if we're, I mean, that can add up really quickly, right? Are we just getting those free weights, paying two dollars a pound, plus getting them so they have a logo on them, plus since they're gonna have the logo, then we're gonna get rid of all the other ones, or we're gonna put them in storage somewhere?
Does it make sense, does it make sense to get additional, instead, instead of using this bid as our not to exceed, does it make sense, are you asking, does it make sense to get, like, more bids and then help us make a decision on what that line should be?
I, I don't have any frame of reference for what's on this list that we need to have to fill out the ten spaces, and what's extra. I, yeah, I.
More bids equal more information to make it easier to, to kind of compare things and, and?
I guess what I'm really asking for is our current inventory, and then what we need to supply four more spaces.
Do you suggest we?
Basic. I, I want to know what the basic is, so I can tell how much is slop.
Yeah. Are you suggesting we, you know, give them some homework and table it for, or, you know, table for another one or something?
We need to table this, but it was, that is what you want.
I should, maybe table's not the right word.
It's all about me, I'm just, these are just.
Do you ever run out of weights? When you have a, a full class using your racks, I mean, you've got some heavy lifters, so are you to the point where you got this guy with five hundred pounds on his rack, then you just have someone do five, one and five maybe?
Yeah, guys that squat, five hundred.
And then, so that means nobody else in the class has weights, so they gotta wait for this guy to finish? Does that, does that happen?
I think there's, there's instances where the, the weights are, you know, that, where they've had to move them around to different stations. I think what they're trying to do here, and I kind of look back, I've looked into this just last couple of days too, what we're wanting to do is with the bumper plates, we, we need all the new bumper plates. Our, our power clean stations, we have none right now, and that's why that concrete floor in there, when they pull that mat up for the next class that goes in there, we're gonna have some concrete work to do. So that needs to be done, because there's ten separate stations, ten different power clean stations also.
So your weights right now are not rubber?
We do not have rubber bumper plates.
Okay, that's. Yeah, I, yeah.
So that's what's gonna be there, so the weights, and then they're gonna take the existing weights then, put those on some of the racks that we have right now, and then the new weights then will be part of the, the weights that are not rubber bump, and will fill out the remaining four, the remaining four racks. Because we're using right now, we're using some of the, we are using all the metal, metal plates to do our power cleans with.
I think they're dangerous. I think the metal plates are dangerous.
And what's the protection gonna be? So explain that for us, the protection for the current ones, so that we don't damage that, and that, is that where you're talking, the rubber bumpers?
The rubber bumpers, they will be, they'll use those for those, any of the lifts where those weights are being dropped, they'll be the rubber, the bumper plates. So the combination.
All solved after this.
Combination of that and this new floor that's gonna be in this weight room. That's part of the issue too, we've had with the weight room we have right now, that floor was not designed to do power cleans on. That's why we used to, years ago, we had power clean platforms. Well, those have, they've run their course, wore their timeout, so now it's just, we've taken some black, some of the old black mats, you've seen them around, stacked those to drop the weights on them. The new weight room will have the floor actually built in for that. That along with the bumper plates, the rubber, the plates, should eliminate any of the problems with tearing up our floor or anything. And then they'll take those existing ones to use on, right now, onto the, the six racks that we have.
So in general, is this, is this quote kind of what you were expecting, or was there some sticker shock for you all as well, or?
I think anytime you start looking at that kind of money, you kind of, you know, it's gonna, it kind of ship it, as far as what weight equipment goes, and, you know, it's, I use the example with those racks, we talk about those racks. Those racks are like buying a car, but you're gonna get the basic car. You don't necessarily, you may not get tires on it, you may not get a, you know, AM/FM radio, you may not get, the racks are just the racks, and then a lot of this other stuff are the things that go with the rack to complete it so that you, the racks are nice, but you can't do anything without the weights and some of the other things that go with it to do it. And there's actually, if you look at it, there's actually, in that weight room, is actually twenty stations, not ten.
Right.
Because you've got ten racks, but you also have ten power clean stations. So there's actually twenty stations now, when you've got forty kids in there, fifty kids in there, you're safe. You've got two kids working per station, and, so because of that, I think, yes, that your initial look at that price is, but I think if you start looking at, when you talk about getting different quotes, your weight equipment's gonna cost within pennies of dollars of each other, whether it's Pro Power, whether it's Hammer Strength, you know, again, it's the same way when you go out, you know, you buy a truck, whether you buy a, you know, a Ford, a Chevy, or if you're buying the same model, your prices are gonna be pretty close, and I would say it's the same way with the weight equipment.
And just, just so we're clear, this will pretty much fill up everything we need for that weight room, it's not gonna be a lot of extra we're gonna need later, you know, three months from now, six months.
I, I couldn't, I don't foresee needing anything else, no, with, with the things that are on that list, that, there's quite a bit of stuff on there, yeah.
And I guess to Lisa's point, like, it would be nice to know, how much are we paying for those logos?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, I'm gonna guess the logos aren't a lot more. My concern was, and I think, you know, and Mrs. Gardner and I talked about this, and Mr. Dr. Smith, in the beginning, and I've kind of done a little more research the last couple of days of looking into some things there, part of the concern was that we don't take the existing plates we have, get rid of them, just so that we can buy the new ones with the logos on them. And so when I've gone down and talked to Coach Sorrell, and we've looked at, you know, how the layout, he has a plan for all of those existing plates. Each rack will not be set up the same, and, and it makes sense if you think about it, and I just, you know, we use kids in our class, we, you know, you put, you put Keenan Mowery shields in one rack, and you put me in another rack. I sure as heck don't need the weights that he's got, okay? So we are able to set up a couple of, three of those racks, maybe with a little more weights, and that's what we're gonna use, some of the existing weights that we already have, would be to set some of those other racks up for some of our bigger kids. And then as you filter down, now you get some of the younger kids, you get some of the, you know, maybe you get some of the female athletes that maybe aren't using and throwing around the same amount of weight, then those racks will be set up a little differently. But my concern was, I don't want to just get rid of plates, you know, that's, that's why the fifteen hundred dollar trade, I'll take every plate we got if we're only gonna get fifteen hundred dollars for it, but we're not, we're not trading those in, we're not getting rid of those, we're gonna use those existing plates on some of the existing racks that we have.
So my question would be, if we're not trading in plates, that fifteen hundred dollars doesn't, you know, that's, that's off the table, are there weights we're taking out of this since we're not trading those in? That you're reducing the number of weights you're gonna buy because the original quote was, we're gonna replace all these, and, or is it, or are you just still buying all the same number of weights and keeping the extra?
Buying the same number and keeping the ones that we have to add to.
Throw the extras in between the logo plates.
Because I think originally the ten, the ten racks and the, and the ten power clean, were all set up to have the exact amount of weight on each one of them, and what we're gonna do is take our existing and be able to take two or three of those power clean stations, two or three of those racks, add weight to those for some of these guys, so that we're not carrying weight back and forth from different racks and we'll have And we'll have everything, and it will, it just keeps things cleaner that way.
So in addition to the, Brian, the 200-some students that signed up for this class, how many of the other, you know, athletic groups? Let's say teams, whatever, are using the weights? I'm pretty sure it's almost everybody, right?
I would take all of our athletic, all of our athletic teams use the weight room. Whether they're in there with Coach Sorrell doing it. We have some of our coaches that do their own, that run, that are down there with their athletes in there. But I think as a whole, all of our athletic teams are using them.
Are we still letting other groups use our weight room? Like outside of, like...
Do you allow, like, police officers do have access to it? Do we have an agreement?
Faculty?
And I think something to think about too is when you think about people, right? Like, we're hiring people to serve in those positions and be there all day, to provide their expertise. And that's a big investment when you're investing in experts to be in there every year. And so if we can give them the equipment that they need to exercise that expertise, that makes, that makes that investment make sense too, right? To put people in a space where they can, they can do what they do well and give kids the experience that they can provide with the expertise they have.
Do you have TRX attachments on any of those? I'd like to see the swim team need those.
I don't know. What you talking about? I don't know.
So we're the, you know, different sports do different things as far as strength and training for, in a weight room, I'm assuming. So the coaches that maybe don't train like football players, athletes like football players? Are there, is there equipment? Or were they considered on this list of equipment? Or is it just for basic strength, training? Like a football player would use, you know what I'm saying? And not that we shouldn't all be strong, but then different sports? I don't know, maybe golf is different or...
I think that's where your dumbbells come in. You can do a lot of different things with the dumbbells that are outside of the racks. That's just me speaking as an amateur.
It's put in for strength and conditioning. It's not put in for football. This weight room's not being built for football. I think you've got the wrong idea. Like, football, yeah, we have a lot of, a lot of athletes in football. But this, this weight room is being put in for strength and conditioning. 245, 68% of our kids in our school use it. Not just, not just football players.
I'm just asking if...
So strength and conditioning is not, is not football. Strength and conditioning is for...
I understand that.
Classroom.
I appreciate that. So with, with funding, this is, this is owner supplied, right? So this comes from any other funding? Or it comes from funding that's within the original project?
Yeah, so it's equipment, Brandon, or Dr. Penrod, do you get it?
So the, a lot of times when we do projects, we're at a little bit of a disadvantage because it's all publicly funded, right? So when we go to, when we go to design a project or get bids or whatever, they see, well, you sold a bond for $10 million. You have $10 million to spend. If that was private, I'd say, hey, you know, do my project. I'll tell you later how much I have to spend, right? But it's all public. And so what we can, what we tell people in their projects is, yeah, you saw our $29 million bond. We want you to design to $16 million all in, and we'll supply the rest of it with what's called owner supplied. Whether that's this kind of stuff, furniture, whatever that might be, playground equipment, you name it. So, and a lot of times I'll, I'll do that, or I'll suggest that we do that so we can avoid the markup. Like, we don't need, and this is nothing, this is no knock on an architecture firm or a CM, but we don't need their, you know, their help in order to buy this weight equipment. And if we did go through the project on this, they would mark that up, you know, accordingly, where whatever the markups are to cover their expenses and that kind of thing. So in this case, this weight equipment is already kind of, it matches everything else, what we've got. So we kind of know what we're doing, know where to go to get it. So we don't need to mark it up. But to your point, it's, it's all the same money. Like, it's all part of the same bond project. Or in this case, South Buckland, I happen to have some old bond projects, or old bond money kind of, that could be used too. But generally, it's, it's all part of the same project. It's just not, it's not under the guise or under the direction of the CM and or the architect. And then the other reason we do that is because we can use other money than to pay for it. Like the premium bond that we sold, or the money interest that we generated from that investment. So US Bank, it's variables, I don't know what the exact rate is today. But US Bank offers a very, a very competitive, a very good rate of return on the money that sits in there on, in the investment custody. So we've got a lot of money in, sitting in there, a lot of money we haven't touched yet, sitting in there for, to pay the affidavit. And that's invested at a pretty impressive rate too.
So what I'm understanding then, this is kind of kind of the project umbrella, but it's not in that, the big chunk. It's in the owner supplied, which is the kind of a separate part, right?
Correct. Yeah, if you were, if you were looking at the resolution you passed for the project, it was all under that resolution. We just, we just wanted to avoid markup and any kind of fee that might go along with it by pulling it out and saying this is owner supplied. And so we've done that, not necessarily South Buckland, but we've done that with furniture before, playground equipment, some others, some others like scoreboards and things like that. That you really don't necessarily need a whole lot of engineering and that kind of stuff to do it. You can just buy it and then, you know, put it up yourself. Or in this case, install it yourself, that kind of.
So on that note, again, if, how many, of all this project, when I look at how much we're spending on athletics and how much we're spending on athletics, and then, and not that we're not doing things for the classroom, but proportionally is not so much. So that, what I understand, with the owner supplied section, if we're taking this big chunk out of that, then that's less that we can spend on classroom teachers who also need good stuff in their classrooms, right?
I think this, this funding is from the project.
Yeah, it's different.
But our, no, but our project is for updates and upgrades, right? So we, we defined it generally. It's not just...
I thought you were saying spend on classroom teaching.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just saying, we have this pile of money here, whether it's for playground equipment or, I don't know. Let's say the HVAC system goes out at Central or something, right? Technically, or we want to upgrade something.
I guess the question would be, if we weren't spending this amount of money on this, Brandon, or Dr. Penrod, I'm sorry. But what, what direction would we be spending that money in then? You know, for every dollar we save on this project, I'm sorry, on this expense, where would those dollars be going? And it wouldn't be going to teacher salaries or anything like that? If this is, or... Or things that were not part of this umbrella of this, of these projects? So what, what would those things be?
I would, I need to look up the facility plan. I don't have that off the top of my head. But what we do is basically get with Dr. Smith, Mr. O'Sullivan, look at what, what else is on there that needs to be done? Whether that's, you know, lower stuff, small stuff, or whatever the case may be. And then just kind of start taking that off. But to your point about what this could be, it could be classroom furniture. It could be painted carpet. It could be media center, showcases. It could be technology. Could be playground equipment. Could be tables and chairs. I mean, you name it, anything of a capital nature. Not, obviously, like you said, not salaries, not benefits, not supplies, like couldn't buy a, you know, a pile of paper with it or anything like that. But anything capital in nature that basically we have as far as needs go.
Do we have classrooms? I mean, we just did all our science classrooms probably the most. I'm not going to say it that way. Needed the most update. We've already replaced carpet in a lot of rooms.
Systematically going through deferred maintenance things over, yeah. Five of your plans.
Get away from those.
But I'm asking, I'm saying things like...
We didn't put over Christmas.
Like this, the new STEM program and adding STEM. Okay, well, that takes a classroom out of the elementaries, right? Do we, are those furnished?
Yeah.
So is it? What I'm saying is, those are kinds of things that came up. That just came up. The STEM classroom just came up, right? So let's say we have it for a year and we need to divide, you know, the room, or we need better furniture, or we need better stations for all the elementary children who are coming through the STEM program.
Do we take it out already? What, we got almost a million bucks in there?
I, I'm just saying, if you spend all of it on this, then you don't have any to spend over a year. That's, that's all I'm...
The STEM labs are already planned. They're already...
Are you talking the whole project? Are you talking about this item here? The weight room?
I am talking about overspending on any one item such as the weight room.
Okay, so that's a different topic. Like, we are on, this item here is a weight room equipment, which is $170,000 at most, right? And, and we're talking, we, we have, we're building a new weight room. We have to fill it. You don't just build it and keep it empty. So you, you have to fill it with a certain amount of equipment. That certain amount of equipment's got an exact cost of some sort, whatever that is. The only difference right now you're looking at in this item is whether it has an eagle on it or it doesn't. That, well, yeah, because we have to, the equipment that we got quoted for is to fill that room.
That's what I feel.
For its purpose, to fill the room for its purpose. So the only difference is...
I'll ask you, administrators, right? Who, who's over this? Is this list of equipment just what we need to fill the stations? So that the rooms that now have six racks can have 10 racks? Or is it now we have 10 racks and we're making a statement piece with our new weight room and all the whistles and bells? That's what I want to know. Are we getting what we need? Or are we getting everything we want? I mean, and maybe, I couldn't tell by looking at this. I don't know. That's what's frustrating to me.
That's a good question, because that's kind of where my mind was. But I, we don't, without seeing the map or the pieces and what pieces are there, it is hard to make that, that determination for us, right?
No.
So I keep going back to, and I don't, this doesn't really answer that question, but hopefully it'll help us get to figure out what we want to do next. And I keep going back to, if, what if we didn't have to approve this line item at this time? What if, what if there's a way that, if, if it wasn't a requirement for us to approve it at this time? Would it have already happened in the project? When we approved this big project that we're doing and these, you know, this expansion and all this, like, like Dr. Penrod said, we chose to take this one out of control of the contractor. If we had left it in there, what would it have looked like? And what would it have cost us? Is this the savings? Is this, what we're looking at now, would it have cost $250,000 if we had left it in the project and just not chosen to be wise with our money and source it ourselves? So that's where I'm trying to compare it. Like, we already said, we're going to build this auxiliary gym, and it's going to have a weight room, and it's going to be filled. Is this, and then, so to add your, this is where your question comes in. Is this filling it? Or is this overfilling it with, you know, bells and whistles? And I'm hearing, you know, Mr. Burgess say that this is kind of what we need. But I do like the way you framed the question. Like, is it what we need? Or is it like what we need and then a few cherries on top? So, I mean, it's a good question. But, but I keep thinking, okay, we would have already spent this money if we'd left it up to contractors and then...
I'm guessing they care to do 20, 30%?
I, I don't like the dollar figure. I really don't. But I feel like we've, we've started on this path. And it's like, this is, this is finishing the project. But I do like the way you framed the question. I think it needs answered. You know, is this a need? Or is this a need with a few wants on top?
But who's, who's to answer that? Do you want to take a vote? It's what we need and it's what we want.
We, we had several, several meetings about this. This isn't, we didn't arrive to this point without having several meetings. It's been part of the discussion since the design. So, and we knew we were going to use existing equipment. We weren't going to get all new equipment. We were going to use existing equipment to reduce the amount of cost. In this quote also is refurbishing what we already have to make it safer, to make it aesthetically pleasing, so we're not putting beat up, you know, you know, looking at a brand new space.
How old is that? I remember proving that, but I think it, is it six years old? Four years old?
Well, I don't know.
I know we had some, since I've been here, we did a couple of things, but nothing major big. Then the other piece of this is just, if it was going to be all bells and whistles, right? We would have replaced everything with brand new, right?
I think you would have done that.
But we're utilizing what we have.
I mean, I can see some things you don't have that I would add to that.
Yeah, Coach Sorrell, I mean, went through and itemized what he wants, you know, to be able to outfit the racks like Mr. Burgess was talking about. And that's what he needs. And we're utilizing the old stuff to do that. If, if we wanted to say, you know, wanted to have a Taj Mahal, we would have had all new weights to match everything, right? But that's not what we're doing. We're filling in what we need to, to fill those stations and to get stuff off, off the floor so that it's safe for kids to walk, you know, while they're working in that space. And so these are the things that we need to be able to outfit that appropriately and to make it safe and to make it aesthetic.
I'll say, I feel, it helps me to try to get my mind around spending that money, knowing that we would have spent more had we not taken upon ourselves to try to source this by us. And we, we made, you know, and so the other, the other thing is, we made the commitment to build the space and fill it out. Now we're just filling it out and we're not happy with the price tag. You know, maybe, maybe it's the inflation thing. But, you know, I think it would have been worse had we not done this. So I, I feel good knowing that at least we have done all those things where we chose to pull it out. And we're using money that technically was invested and we're taking earnings from that money and helping fund this.
The team decided that that's what we need.
We are using some stuff, we're recycling, we're mixing things in with it.
The team that says this is what we need. Like you said, we don't leave it at... Dr. Penrod, we've had comparative, we've had competitive posts as well. And this one is the lower one of those, so.
Okay. Didn't know that. I'm finished with my discussion.
I move to approve the new weight room equipment, the equipment updates.
We made the motion to approve the new weight room equipment and equipment updates. Wade seconded that. All those in favor? Oppose? Consideration of Fillmore Elementary preschool playground.
This is a fun one. We're seeking approval of Fillmore Elementary preschool playground project. It is, the vast majority of this project is paid for by a... It is, the vast majority of this project is paid for by a preschool grant, which is amazing. There'll be the, you know, little person sized equipment, and they'll be put out there near the, the rest of the Fillmore Elementary Playground as well. We'll have some work to do as far as installation. But it's a great project, and again, paid for with grant funds for the majority of it, except the installation. So I'm just looking to approve this, and you have the information in your packets.
I move to approve the Fillmore Elementary Preschool Playground, I'm sorry.
I saw the layout for that, and it looks like, so you can separate that out so the big kids aren't with the little kids?
We're doing some workout, you guys know we've been doing some, some updates out there, and, and there'll be some more updates that'll be coming. Some deferred maintenance stuff that we want to get, some fence removals and stuff like that, of things that aren't being used. And that'll go in those places. It'll be, it'll look really nice.
I move to approve the Fillmore Elementary Preschool Playground. I'll second.
Okay.
I'll say Holly did.
Yeah.
Joe made the motion to approve the elementary, Fillmore Elementary Preschool Playground equipment. Holly seconded that. All those in favor? Consideration of Adtech, or fiscal year 2026 contract.
So this is just the annual contract renewal for our E-rate services. They give significant discounts on a lot of our technology buys and services, especially rack type things and that type, on the backend of, of our technology. And so just seeking approval of that contract so they can continue to, to give us those discounts.
Move to approve the Adtech fiscal year 2026 contract.
Yes.
Holly made the motion to approve the Adtech fiscal year 2026 contract. Wade seconded it. All those in favor? Then Superintendent Tito.
Real quick report tonight. Graduation is Saturday afternoon, so we have another successful South Footnum class. It's, yeah, some of you are breathing relief up here on the, on the board, so I got another one through. The second thing is our building project, as you heard earlier, is going into hyper mode next Tuesday. A lot of activity across the campus coming next week, so pretty exciting. Steel's erected today, so a lot of exciting changes going on around, around the campus. And last is, tomorrow's our last student day, Friday's our last teacher day. And so just wishing everyone a amazing summer, and thank you for an amazing year, so. Other than that, know that your administration office will be working hard all summer long, getting ready for that 25, 26 school year, so thank you.
If there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Our next regular board meeting is June 8th.